Let's get this regular meeting of Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 under. Pleasure to be here.
To the flag of the United States of America, in to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Leslie, wait. Before we get started. President has prepared. He filed a quote from our president. Our native-born president. So I'm gonna read the quote. Equality of opportunity is the right of every American, rich or poor, born or native-born, without respect to race or religion. Compliance maintenance alone, we can hold open the door of full achievement to every new generation and to every boy and girl. That is a quote from our honor of president's day. From our former president. Roll call, please, Leslie.
Senator Hoffman?
Here.
Councilperson Sexton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Goodweiler?
Here.
Stulman?
Here.
We have no guest speakers. On the schedule, so we'll entertain public comment from anyone who wishes to address the council. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? All right, I see Pete, but let's not, he must go to be quiet today. Been a while, hasn't it, Pete?
It has, I'm better in person than on a screen.
All right, we're gonna move on. Consent agenda is a motion to approve the last. Meeting minutes of February 1st. A Class C wine with outdoor sales and Sunday sales liquor license. For the Elmira Winery, which is the BrickArts Winery. A Class C liquor license with native wine and outdoor service and Sunday sales for Elder LLC, which is the Little Lights facility. We need to set a public hearing to consider authorizing the city administrator to execute a state revolving fund planning and design loan related to the city's wastewater treatment system. And that meeting will be on March 1st, which is our next regular meeting at 7:00 P.M. A motion to approve writing off unpaid utility balance as per a previous resolution 1087 for Fox Run Golf Course, which actually is for, well, Fox Run, correct? Motion to approve writing off an unpaid utility balances. For resolution 1087 for 213 Cedar Street. And the claims, give me a motion, someone. We can talk. Jerry?
Second.
Put your hand up. Colton?
Can we turn those unpaid bills over to a collection agency? Just give it to them and let them go after them?
Well, it's only $250.
I don't care. I don't. I agree with you, I was gonna ask that same question.
Leslie?
Okay, so the first one is Fox Run. And that balance was turned over to, there was a lien put on the property before it was sold. So this is the balance from the lien. That corporation no longer exists, so I don't think we could turn it into a collection. It's been sitting on our books for a couple of years. And again, if you saw the description, I put a lien on this property in February 2016 in the amount of $591.33, which was recovered through a property tax assessment. The balance after that was $101.99. The difference between what was the $101.99 plus, based on the balance, is $251.89. The difference was just stormwater fees. It wasn't actually water, it was stormwater fees. And that was the difference. So that was the first one. And the one on 213 Cedar Street, that was a bank-owned property. I got a call several years ago and said that the property was going into foreclosure. They gave me an address of where to send the bill, but the bill was never paid. That also had no usage on the property. It was zero consumption the entire time. We did try to shut off the water when they didn't pay the bill, but we found out the curb stop was not operable, so we couldn't turn the water off. And during that few, those few months, I did also was getting ready to lien that property as well, so I could get some money before they sold it. But again, they had no communication with me. I sent them the 30-day lien notice in March of 2017, I'm sorry, in February of 2017, and in March I was told there was a new owner. So, lost the opportunity to get a lien because there was no communication.
So I imagine a. A headhunter would be, I don't even know where they, where it would go to.
I have no information to give them, other than what I've already tried to do. We do, I follow up on all of these. I mean, we do have several people on income offset. We do have a collection agency that, a collection agency will go after any amount. Income offset will only go after amounts over $50. I try not to keep my arrears too high, I try to keep them pretty tight, so these are just two lingering ones that have just laid out there for a while and I'm gonna get them on the books.
This is the first time I've had it happen in my five years here. Is that right?
I usually, I'm usually pretty successful at giving them my answer to questions. Our, our collection agency that we've used has never really been very beneficial or responsive.
Do they, do they take a percentage of what they're after that out?
Yeah. Income, income offset only charges us $7. Or actually, we add $7 to it if the bill is, and then we get, we'll get the whole thing. It takes a while, I've had some people on income offset for five years. And I've had some that have been on since before I started, but I get hit every year, so I keep them on because I know it's gonna whittle it down. With the collection agency, they charge 35%. And if they're on income offset, and income offset gets the money, they still get 50%.
Well, we're being asked tonight to just write it off, I guess. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
Okay. Hearing none, let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Okay, we have our first, our business is a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak publicly on the plans, specifications, the form of contract, and estimate of cost? For the I-80 Water Main Relocation Project? Anyone here in the building or online to address that subject? Is that you, President, putting that up?
Yes.
Okay, hearing no public comment, we will exit the public hearing and move into a resolution, 1980, approving the plans and specs for the I-80 Water Main Relocation Project. Can I have a motion, someone? Colton? And Nick? I didn't study this a whole lot because I didn't have time. I think our engineers and our. State. State engineers know what they're doing. So the bids were received on this, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Are they just sitting there then waiting to open?
So, no, they've been open. Currently, they're, they're going under a little review, so we're checking references and things like that. We'll be prepared to bring that in the next cycle soon.
Right.
But we just had a plan of specs this cycle, we will have to make an award contract next time.
Any comments, questions? If not, I will, wait, we have a resolution, so, I mean, a motion, so, Leslie, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
All right, item three is a public hearing. On a proposed amendment, section two, section 165. We will be adding a section 50 for swimming pools to the West Branch City zoning ordinance. Is anyone here who wants to address?
What, what page is it on? I'm, I'm, I'm going with.
165.
170.
Way down there.
Yeah, 'cause we gotta go through all that DOD crap.
Okay, so we have, we're in our public hearing right now. Is anyone here publicly? To address the council on our swimming pool ordinance? Hearing none. We'll exit the public hearing. And move into. To. Our first reading of said ordinance, 780. Amending chapter 165 entitled zoning regulations regarding adding section 50. Swimming, swimming pools to the West Branch zoning ordinance.
There, I found it.
There it is.
So moved.
Oh, thank you.
Second, anyone? Second by Jerry. So this has gone through a number of. Edits. I complained about having to put a four-foot fence around an above-ground pool that was already four feet above ground. So this requires fences only around pools. In-ground pools, or. An above-ground pool that is less than four feet above the ground.
That's the permit.
And it allows for a permit to be taken out for. Permanent pools only. Which is good, we don't need permits for. Above-ground pools, temporary pools. And it outlines certain setback requirements. So I, I think that this is a good, Iowa City's ordinance was way more complicated. This is a good compromise for the city of West Branch.
So the swimming pools that are up already. They all, you know, they grandfathered? Are they grandfathered, or are they, are they pretty much complying with, with this ordinance?
I know one probably does not comply. The others have fences around their gardens. What, two of them, three of them? In-ground pool?
Three yards, count them.
There's three in-ground pools. Two have, at least, one has probably a five-foot, and below, you can't see through it.
So that qualifies.
Yep, that's qualified. One is a four-foot chain link.
Yep.
And then there's another one that's got a gap, so.
That one probably does not conform.
That one probably does not conform, but my understanding was that the owner had a locking cover on that, but I've not been there to verify that.
Is there existing grandfathering then, that we would allow?
I wouldn't think that we would allow that for them. Especially if they had a cover on it like that. Yeah, and obviously, if it was closer to setbacks, they're in here, they'd be allowed to grandfather.
No.
Obviously. Yeah, it's not gonna happen, so.
All right, so.
If they ever did anything to the pool, they'd have to comply, but I was like, well, we're already compliant.
Guess my last question is, who's going to do our inspections?
It'll go through the permit process, so Jerry Gert will be doing the inspections.
Because it needs a permit, he'll do an inspection. Who, who releases this if they don't come to get a permit?
Well, I think for the most part, it's like anything, you know, there's a lot of eyes and ears in town. It doesn't, not, not much gets by.
They get told.
The underground contractors gotta have it, it goes in the city, too. They don't wanna get in trouble either.
Yeah. Has to be, I guess, difficult, but. I know it just says a temporary is a pool that can be taken down or dismantled during the winter months, and it talks about the, can't be located in a front yard, assuming we're excluding like. My, well, my one-foot-deep pool I bought from Menards that.
Anywhere you want my kid in.
Anywhere. Well, it's a temporary pool. I put it in my driveway, it's definitely not 40 feet back, I'm just saying, I'm assuming we're not gonna be that analotentive about this. I didn't know if we needed to do any. Weird clarification, or.
I don't think that would be.
I just wanted to make sure.
Taken down, you just pick it up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Taken down, just man, those ones that, you know, you have the heights.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to say, was there any, any phone calls?
We're not gonna be that, yeah, that, no.
Can I put a kiddie pool in my front yard, like? I don't know if that many people are gonna be looking at this anyway, but still wanted to pose the question.
Puts one up every summer in his driveway. Temporary, though, he takes them in.
Wouldn't ruin the grass.
Even a temporary, no. So even a temporary one, we, is, is that allowed in a driveway?
It just says forty feet back from property lines.
It's gotta be forty feet back.
The front yards, if it's in the driveways in front of the house, it wouldn't be allowed.
There are houses.
For temporary and permanent pool.
Definitely right.
You set back a minimum of 10 feet from inside.
So he wouldn't be allowed to do that.
Yeah, just his house is sixty.
His kids are old now, he may not do it anymore. Okay, I think this is a good compromise, any other comments?
I got a comment, so if, as I've been reading this, of course, I'm just reading the red, I'm not reading the whole thing, so maybe they'll say something different than that, but. It says, does say like for. For the fence, that. Pools that are 24 inches deep, or, you know, less than 24 inches deep, don't have to have fence around it. But it doesn't say anything in here about pools less than 24 inches not having to provide by the setbacks and that type of stuff.
Does up there a number of. Number one.
Number one says setbacks, temporary or permanent.
Yeah, they're temporary or permanent, regardless of depth. Yeah.
Well, that's stupid. I mean, that's keeping a guy from setting his kiddie pool up in his driveway while his kids are swimming.
That's why I asked the question.
When I read this, that was my question as well.
I mean, so, it'd be easy to put something in there.
For temporary pools over 24 inches.
What are those little plastic soft-sided ones that hold up, I don't even think they're two-foot-deep, are they? You know?
Some of them are.
Yeah, you can get some, you can get.
Yeah, the elephant foot ones, you can get two-foot deep.
Yeah, you can get two-foot deep. Four-foot diameter ones are only like six inches, eight inches, or whatever.
Why do we allow those?
So maybe you put a two-foot, you know, anything that's under two foot is, is temporary.
We can just add something to the definition of temporary, so it's that.
Two-foot or less.
Two-foot or less does not qualify as a, does not qualify or under. Is exempt from the.
Exempt.
Exempt.
Setback? From setback, and.
Exempt from anything.
Exempt from the annual chapter.
Hey, where do we put that in here, then?
Just put it up on the definition.
Temporary.
The temporary we just put in there, anything less than, you know, 24 inches, or whatever you take, are, is not, is not a temporary pool and exempt from this. Or, we just, we could just put another section that says, you know. It's exempt, you know, you describe that.
That would be quite.
I can just, if you wanna pass the first one, I can bring, I just bring that change back next time.
Next to that.
So we would like to exempt anything less than 24 inches from any rule whatsoever.
A lot more effort.
Yeah. Is that what we're getting at?
The what?
Anything less than 24 inches deep, from any rule whatsoever?
Yes. And it's temporary.
Yeah. I could, I could write something like, if you wanna pass the first one, I'll bring something back the second time, with that in there.
I guess it depends, I have a neighbor that has had a kiddie pool in his front yard for the past 10 years.
Okay, so.
That way, you won't have to haggle over tonight, I'll bring you something back then.
I agree. All right, so we should pass this tonight, before, before summer gets here.
Probably twenty years. Yep.
Does that make sense, everybody?
Yep.
I think so.
Okay. We can go ahead and vote that, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
All right, fund transfers, resolution 1978. Authorizing certain fund transfers for the College Street Bridge and Second Street Improvement Project. Give me a motion, someone. Nick, second, and Colton, will second. My only question here is, there's $145,000 from the College Street Bridge, 310.
We are transferring the balance of the College Street Bridge account to the Second Street account. And this transaction will clear the $345,000 balance, and have a zero balance over them.
Okay, but that $145,000 from 310, that's the federal project, we can't use that on the streets.
We use our cap amount already, I believe.
I don't, I don't think that there's, that there's a problem. Because we didn't, I guess I don't know all the rules, but the reimbursement was, I, I didn't think that we had a restriction on how we could use the reimbursement. Maybe I'm wrong. But this is a, we, they reimbursed us for our expenditures, and I don't think there were any, I don't think there were any restrictions.
They, they didn't give us more than we spent.
No, we were $5,000 short.
So all we're doing is paying ourselves back for the money that we spent.
We aren't.
We spent, so we spent this money out of our pocket already. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we spent $345,000.
Okay, that's, okay, that, that clears it up for me.
Yeah.
They gave us our money back.
We managed to bring it down, so.
We essentially loaned them.
Okay, that clears it up.
Yeah, we loaned them to do the project, now they're giving it back.
I approve. All right.
We get to zero this all out?
Yes.
Let's vote.
Yeah, go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Yeah, and we didn't have to borrow no money.
Thank you, Dave Schekinger, for all that, you did a great job.
Any more money, I guess.
All right, item number six, resolution 1979, establishing a new fund, here we go.
Easy come, easy go.
What is this for?
The school turn lane and the round valve.
I see it, there we go.
I needed to have them on the budget.
Give me a motion, someone. Nick? Second by Jerry. We will continue as, assuming the school turn lane will get.
That, that's my question.
Done?
Why is this on here when we're not even sure what the school's doing yet?
Well, I have to have it on the budget in order.
For this year, but what if it doesn't happen this year?
Well, no, yeah, well, I'm working on the budget for next year.
It may happen next year.
So.
So what happens?
If, if we decide to do this. And we don't have it on our budget, we'll have to amend the budget next year and put it on. And I just thought, take care of it, and if you don't wanna do it, I don't care, but.
We're committed, our portion, we've already committed.
I want, actually wanna revisit that.
We might. Okay, task at hand first.
For a little clarification, we don't have to spend any money out of this fund for that, it has to still come back for council approval. This is just to save us a step of having to go through a budget amendment process, which we only get so many of those, well, we get as many, but we only get a time, a certain timeframe to do those next year, so we try to use those very prudently, and this would be an easy way to take care of that, if it does materialize, then we can have a fund to actually have the money go through.
So can we tell you not to put any money into it until you come and talk to us?
Sure can. We weren't gonna recommend.
I was gonna put $50,000.
$50,000 in it, but it could certainly be zero.
Money is gonna go in there, it would just be in the budget. And, and you would have to authorize it to go in there.
Okay.
Much like how we do the, the downtown East Street development, doesn't mean we spend it or going to, but if we need it, it's there.
Once it goes into that fund, it's locked, is it locked into that fund?
No, you can take it out, if, if you change your mind, that, that's not an issue.
I'm just. It's not not related, just a little different. I noticed when we get those sheets that have all our funds, it has funds on there, there are projects that we did five, six years ago, and we still have that fund. Is there ever any time that it just goes away, or ever? We don't get to, we don't have to look at it anymore?
I guess we need to go into the software, and it'll eliminate the history, and I don't know enough about that, that, that's the problem.
Go ahead.
Kinda like cleaning your desktop off, get them out of there once in a while.
Because there's some of them projects, when I, every time I just see, see it written down, it makes me mad.
Well, I don't, they're not there because, like, making me mad.
I know, I know.
But I'd like to get rid of them, too, but we'll lose the history, that's the problem.
Go ahead.
I mean, over five years, it's like the College Street Bridge, it'll hang around for a while, but in three or four years from now, it doesn't need to be there anymore.
Doesn't need to be there now.
Yeah. So, we are, yeah, we already voted.
Yeah, we just cleared it.
We'll have to talk to the software.
Oh, I know. All right. I mean, we gotta, we're worried about it. I just know we can't clear it now, but we're worried about history, we get sure we got other, plenty of other places that that's written down.
All right, so task at hand is to establish these two new funds, we got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Well, you just spoke too soon.
I did. So, budget topics. We've seen. All these items before, I have a little problem with some of them, say funded. Which don't require any money, for instance. Annexation plan. This is semantics, it's no big deal. This is semantics, it's no big deal.
Yeah, it's just, there's administrative operations, if you will. But there, there has been some updates, uh, to the stuff that's in the packet, so I'm going to let, uh, Gordon kind of walk us through, it seems like, um, it actually has improved for the better, so we're, we're able to do a little bit more, um, with, uh, with, with a couple of our items, but on our cer, on our certification sheet in particular, so, uh, I'll let Gordon kind of walk me through that, I think he passed them out.
Yes, I did. If I take this mask off. The certification sheet on the back of it, it has what we had on our max levy. And I finally got through the budget and made some calculations and the numbers in the new column are what are on the front of here, and they would be our new max levy amounts. And so there's a reduction of twenty-six thousand dollars from what we had on our max levy. Um, I can go through these if you'd like, just so you have an idea.
The front of it here, you mean?
Yeah, the front.
Yeah, please briefly.
Uh, the ten thousand dollars in the, in the column A, um, operation of a civic center, that is really all we need, we have more dollars budgeted for that, but we have a small reserve, if we need to do capital improvements, we can. So that was reduced from eighteen thousand to ten thousand. Liability, uh, forty-five thousand, three seventy-eight, that went up. I got a notification from the ICAP, our insurance company, they said to budget at least fifteen percent increase, which I did. I don't know if it, hopefully that'll be adequate, but that did go up. The support of a local emergency, that's the amount that we will be billed by the emergency, uh, group over at Cedar County. The emergency levy, I just maxed it out, whatever the twenty-seven cents would get us, I took that. That will go to the, uh, general fund, when, at year end, it's just to add to our balance.
That's the forty thousand seven fifty?
Yes. Then the FICA and Ipers and the other employee benefits, they are what came off of our calculation of taxes and insurance. There's a work, workers' compensation.
Well, is that new money that is raised from this levy?
That, that's what the money will be, that's the amount of money that will be raised from this levy.
This levy?
Yeah. Hundred and fifty-four thousand for Ipers and FICA and then a hundred and forty thousand for our, uh, group insurance. Now that does take into account the portion we deduct from the total amount, what the employees pay, and this is the balance that's left. So, after doing that, and then also looking at our TIF dollars, I found that I had over levied by thirty-seven thousand dollars, the, an amount, so because that money, we were, we requested TIF reimbursement, and I was also, I didn't realize it, not deducting that amount from the levy portion. And so we were levying taxes for it also. So, I made an adjustment there and.
Where is that again?
That would be down in, under debt service. That is now three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it was thirty-seven thousand dollars higher. So, we already submitted our request for next year, next fiscal year, so we're going to get money that way.
So we gotta spend forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we, we've got, we actually have more, because I've done this for a couple of years now, we have a little bit of a surplus in that TIF account. I didn't understand why it was growing. It, it mattered, done some things too that I did not understand. But as far as I'm concerned, we have money in the TIF, we do not have to request the thirty-seven thousand next year, but we will still be able to pay it.
But we're levying money to put into a TIF account?
We're not supposed to, but I, I didn't know I was doing that, but that is what I was doing. We send that certification, we, at the end of November, we send the certification, while there was a thirty-seven thousand dollars, that was for debt payment, and I thought it was just to repay general fund. So I was repaying general fund and but now, now I've got it straight. So, that reduced our debt levy, and so in order to keep our balance at thirteen thousand, Redmond and I, I tell, I'm not a fan of, of this, but that's what Redmond wanted to do, raise sixty thousand, we're still not, we're still not any different than we were last year. Yeah, that capital project reserve, that's sixty thousand dollars. That will go into a reserve and you can use it for capital projects next year.
Or would it rise?
Or future years.
Or, yeah, whatever you want to do.
I don't know why we would use it in the same year that we have it, it needs to build up.
Well, well, yeah, I guess it doesn't matter to me, but it's.
If it's going to be there, you might as well grow it for a while.
So, that's the certification sheet. We can go through, uh, I guess there, I'm going to start tomorrow putting the budget forms that we have the budget on into the computer, the state computer, and see if I can discover any other issues. Right now, I'm not aware of any, but I guess they can come up if, if I've overlooked something.
Okay. So this puts us on our way to finishing our budget then for twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, and actually I wanted to just let you know, we'll, we'll probably, upon March fifteenth, for the final approval. Not necessarily, but the budget won't be done, but we have to have a certain period of time for public, public, uh, notice.
Ten to twenty days?
Ten, yeah.
Yeah.
No more than.
Ten to twenty, three days.
Well.
It has to be.
What I was.
All right, I'll let you guys, you guys got that figured out.
Yeah.
So it can't be the next meeting?
So we'll set the, we'll set the hearing at the next meeting.
I think they call it, you accept the budget at the next hearing, and then the second hearing, you approve the budget after the hearing.
Yeah.
You accept it in the first meeting of March and.
Which gives them the form to publish the meetings.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they have this little, uh.
Fourteen or fourteen days apart.
At the back of the thing that tells us when we can do it.
And a Friday.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll approve it Monday night, but the deadline for the paper is Monday.
We'll actually have to put it in the paper.
We'll put it in before.
Oh, Monday morning.
Before you folks accept it, because that's what we have to do.
Yeah.
I'm getting it now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we all hope that you guys approve it.
I was just going to say, I go.
If you don't, then we're up a creek.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that'd be.
Yeah.
Special meeting, that'd be a special.
Call him Tuesday morning, tell him it's cracked.
Okay.
I'm getting it, I've only done this five times, so.
Well, the max levies only been around for two years, I guess.
Okay, is that it on our budget item tonight then?
Well, that's all I have, if you have any questions, let me know.
Does that conclude our meeting then? Thank you, Redmond and Gordon.
Someone.
Yeah, Redmond's got a nice, nice lengthy write-up here, I, I I breezed through it, I didn't stop.
Yeah, I just tried to cover some of the items that we've talked about, let folks know how we compare with other communities.
Okay, I think we're going to move on then to the city administrator's report.
We have a couple of new things, um, I think we all know, I wasn't sure, but, uh, West Branch Village has expressed interest in tapping into our system, so I don't know if that announcement's been made yet. They, I don't know if I did make it, but they are, they are interested in tapping into our system now, so now we're, we're looking at what that cost will be. Everything from this point forward is going to be a pass-through, so we're not looking to assume any expenses due to that, that tap-in. There are, uh, opportunities which we were looking at, at one time, uh, there's a CDBG grant that could be got, gone after to help with the cost of, of tapping, making that connection, so we're going to re, review those efforts and get those back up and, and, uh, B and K was kind of, um, kind of telling us about it and, and taking the lead on some of those things, so, um, that's in the play, I haven't had a direct, um, communication with them yet, so we're.
Having part, you're discussing.
Right, so once we get those, those numbers, how much is it going to cost and, and what the CDBG opportunities are, then we'll, we'll look to.
Would those meters be read as a residential rate or?
I think that's still open to this, um, I'm not real sure where we, where we sit on that. I think it'd probably be one big meter, yeah.
One what?
One.
One big meter?
Taking the whole, I don't think it'd be individual, but.
How do you, how do you put a meter on a sewer system?
Well, at the point where it taps in at, we'll have one there.
We'd have to meter the water.
Water system is already metered.
Well, there's a flow, well, there's a flow meter too. But there's that.
Right now my sewer gets to build through what I.
I think we have.
That's how you do it.
The water flow to.
That's not the only way.
Yeah.
I could take all my water and, you know, wash it in my backyard and it's still a charge.
Okay.
When we raised, the sewer rates for the city people, the village did not get raised. And I said, when they tap on, they will be paying that rate to make up for what the rest of the residents have been paying the whole time.
So that's the approach, or we goose up whatever the rate is to make up for that difference?
Well, that's not how any other frickin' city in the whole wide world does it, Jody. There's a tap-on fee and it's per, per acre or per resident or something like that, you charge them that. You can't just go to, somebody wants on your sewer, you tell them, okay, but you gotta pay the rate for the last ten years.
It's not, no, Colton, that's not what I'm talking about.
For a service that you won't even use it.
We raised the rates for the new sewer project.
Right.
The village is coming on because of the new sewer project. So they don't have to pay for that? Where the rest of the town has?
They will once they're tapped in.
Yeah, I think it can be part of the tap-in fee as well, whatever that calculation we use, it's up to us. So I'm sure of being capable.
It's kind of like the school. The tap-in fee ought to be paid by the village because you're wanting into it.
Right, nobody's saying that you shouldn't, they shouldn't pay that.
But that, okay, that's separate from what every residence has been paying for the last year.
Well, timeout, then, then that's on the cities, that's on the city to say, you know what, we are not capable of handling you, we don't want you. Keep running your lagoon, we don't want you, we don't want your revenue. We don't, we don't want to be able to charge you from here on out to help us pay for our new system. You just keep doing what you're doing then. I mean, you always have the option to do that.
Yep, and that was what, when we approached and the village and said that we wanted to start raising the rates for the new project, and these, the village said, we may want to explore our own.
There you go.
Doing our own which is, and I said, fine, that's fine, but when you come back and ask to get on ours, then the hundred thousand that is owed will be paid.
As if it's in arrears? Is that what, is that what you're implying? I'm just trying to make it clear, I guess. In my, in my opinion, it, it starts when they tap in, that's when they start paying.
But they also have a connection fee when they tap in, plus the rates. Plus the rates when.
Connection fee.
The connection fee when they tap, plus they'll have to pay the rates going forward.
The new rate, whatever the new rate is.
And they're going to want to do that because, because we're also seeking grants for them that they wouldn't or be able to get on their own. They need to have a government entity to go after the CDBG.
Not only that, that's just the normal way you go about doing it, I mean, almost every city in the world has a connection fee and it's, they figure it different ways, some it's by the acreage or, you know, and it, it's a fee. I would imagine we probably have something like that when, when somebody decides they're going to put a development in, there's, there's a connection fee. Yeah, there's a connection fee that gets paid, you know, and you don't go to, you don't go to Ember Lane and say, well, you, you should pay, since we raised the rates a couple of years ago to pay for our new sewer system, you, you should pay that because.
We're not, we're not talking about that, we're talking about, we knew, the village knew that they wanted on when the new system came, right? We're not saying that you're coming on after the fact.
Jody, you cannot reasonably sit there and tell me that you think somebody should pay for a service that they're not using.
They're going to be using it, I'm paying for a service that I'm not getting yet. I'm, I'm paying extra for a service that is coming. We raised the rates to pay for the service coming.
We raised the rates, so day one, we didn't double their charges. That's why we raised their rates, these people day one, they're going to go from not having to pay anything for sewer, they're having to pay twelve, fourteen, fifteen bucks per thousand gallons.
They haven't paid it for how many years? Thirty, forty, forty, and seventy.
Okay, I, you're right, let's punish them some division. That's what we ought to do.
No, move, move on, Redmond.
Okay, um, so we talked about the, uh, changes in the, in the budget, just pushing back a, another, uh, cycle and reworking our public announcements. I had offered up some, some new county numbers, I actually, this is I think the first time they actually released some county numbers, so, um, if you want to know how Cedar County's doing, you're on the COVID list there. Oh, and there's, so we've, we've received some, some interest, uh, about vaccinations, uh, so just, so you know, we've been getting a couple of calls. Around the same time, a memo's been released, um, by, uh, Cedar County identifying the issue that I was getting the calls is, people would like to see an area in West Branch that actually was giving vaccines because there was some difficulty, particularly with the weather, getting down to Tipton to do it, so, um, shortly thereafter, um, I got this, this memo and apparently, uh, Family Mercy, Mercy is, is going to be, Mercy Family Services are going to be, calling folks who are eligible for, uh, the vaccine. I heard that maybe it's just they're only calling their patients, but I don't know that for sure. Um, but according to the memo that Cedar County's put out, they're going to be calling people that are eligible. Um, I think that, uh, we have some, had some opportunities where the fire station has been involved in giving out, but that was the kind of unique thing, and I know Tom Dean knows more about that than I do. And I know Tom Dean knows more about that than I do, uh, but we don't, we don't think that that's gonna be, um, enough to have an ongoing service. I think it's, um, if they have leftovers, once those things get opened up, there's a certain type of lifespan and they don't wanna have to waste them. And if there's, um, opportunities like West Branch Fire that can come in and, and give some, then those opportunities will avail ourselves of, but it's not.
Basically what that is, is last Thursday, Cedar County Public Health called me because I was the medical director of the fire department and had received state approval to set up a satellite COVID vaccine center at the fire station. They said, we, we have some extra doses, you think you could set up a satellite vaccination site? And I said, how many you have? And they said thirty, and we, uh, they said, but please emphasize seventy-five and above, which we did. We filled up within an hour of thirty people. Uh, we gave thirty vaccines Saturday. The average age of all was seventy-nine point nine. Uh, they were so impressed that we received another fifty vaccines. We, we have another clinic set up for Thursday morning. All those slots are filled. Every indication is that we'll receive some more vaccines next week and we'll run another clinic and we'll keep running clinics until, until, uh, they won't give us any more vaccines.
You prepared to do this all summer long if, if, uh, if that's how it pans out?
After last weekend, I was pretty much done. I, 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 I'm just really disappointed in some of the members of the community and, and some of their, uh, comments in regards to, uh, patient selection and favoritism, nepotism, and not coming to the source to ask how I developed my list. And I think you know who I'm talking about.
But that seventy people knocked off the list that, that didn't have it before and that's.
Uh, actually, we're about a hundred and ten.
Well, thank you very much for your efforts, Tom.
I didn't, I didn't write a letter to the county health, um, director, um, explaining how I was able to select my uh, thirty people. I've received seventy-seven phone calls since. In regards to availability.
Well, that's all I have. Okay. I agree. Thank you, Tom.
There's gotta be a better way.
Well, the, you know, the prob, the problem is, the problem is these elderly people, you know, oh, we'll just go to the Walmart website and, and sign up. Well, they've never turned on a computer, they don't know what a website is, they don't know how to navigate and these people are just, just sitting out there and, and I had, I did, uh, a COVID vaccine on a lady, ninety-two-year-old lady who hasn't been out of the house in a year. Said you're gonna bring me cookies. You know, so it's very, it's very, very rewarding.
Okay, um, that's a whole nother topic. Kevin, do you have anything?
I was late. I was, I'm wearing the mail delivery person on my driveway. And she's still sitting there, so, um, and I did, was informed that I, I get my vaccine the same time Bernie Madoff gets it and stuff. The lawyer's on the list.
He's just yelling, might get a clip.
They're, they're towards the top.
Yeah, Cedar County is way out of Johnson County getting stuff out and other counties around here, so.
There, there are fire departments in Johnson County that haven't received a COVID vaccine.
Washington Police Chief just kinda left. Washington City.
City of Iowa City had a new, uh, fire department, have a gun there.
So is the fire department our go-to place or could, could we volunteer the town hall?
No, I, I, we, I had thought about the town hall, but we don't have handicap accessible.
That little elevator thing gonna work?
It hasn't worked. You know that? No, I don't think it works.
I haven't heard that it does not.
Yeah, I think it should probably fix it.
I think it works.
Okay, just doesn't work very well.
Yeah.
It might be debated whether it works now.
Is that it for me, Kevin?
Negative eight for the last two weeks.
Staff, anyone?
Um, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry, here I'm gonna try. So the town hall elevator does work, but I haven't checked it recently because it's pretty cold. But last I knew it was working and at election time it was working. Um, so we'll probably have to check that again, though. There's another election in there in March, so. Um, but what I was gonna say is we had a Hoover's hometown days meeting last week and, uh, instead of the, we're gonna try something different on Village Green. So I'm looking for any groups that would like to kind of do some carnival-type games as a, not as a fundraising opportunity, but as a fundraising opportunity or for a little bit of money into their organization. So if there's any groups out there, church groups, nonprofits, school groups that would like to participate, just have them give me a call.
Can groups do that on the Village Green?
Well, they can't charge money on the Village Green, but it could be something that we pay them so much to do a certain booth. We're just toy into some different ideas. But we could also use the street in front of Village Green for, um, if they wanted to do a charge.
So we're not gonna do the inflatables? Bottom line, no inflatables.
Um, well, we may still use the inflatable cart, um, company for some carnival games. But in regards to the bounce houses and things, the, that we're not gonna do, but we might take advantage of some of the other opportunities that they have, like the inflatable hatchet throw or the, um, putt-putt golf, the mini golf or laser tag. So we might still use them, but it's still a little too early to tell that. So basically, I'm looking for any groups that wanna participate so that we have an idea of who would like to do that. That's all I have.
All right. Matt, anybody else? Um, that's down to us. Um, I have two comments. We have the park, the NPS contract's coming up. They, they're on my email.
Yes, they're.
We should be.
They're close.
I thought, I received copies from P. I assumed everyone did.
Yeah, they're, they're close. Um, I think, I think they might be ready. Uh, I think we were almost thinking it was gonna be on this cycle, uh, but I had to sign it and send it back.
So there's two contracts, one for snow removal.
Yes.
And the other is for police and EMS.
Right. I think they're a total of eighty-five hundred or something like that.
Right.
So it's, it's getting, it's, it's really close. I can smell it.
Okay, um, I guess my only other comment is this bank building next door's been for sale. It's, Jerry and I went through it with Redmond as a potential use for a library. It's, it's gonna be a lot and lot of money. It needs a sprinkler system and an elevator installed. And we brought up to the realtor that the only way the city would consider it is if they would give us back some money, two or three hundred thousand dollars. He called me back yesterday and said they were, they're not here. So I think that project is probably, even thinking about it is dead in my mind. You're talking nine hundred thousand dollars, probably. We'll turn it into a library. And.
Time's on your side. They're gonna lease it on it for a long time.
Uh, they got an offer. They already got an offer. I'll tell you about it.
You just make, nah, we'll just quickly.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else, anything?
Colton, you elaborated on the turn lane.
I wanna bring that back up next go-around.
So where it's at is we approved a hundred thousand dollars. So the twenty-eight agreement went to the school boards. They have not acted on it. Um, two or three of them think we need to chip in more money. That's the bottom line.
I think we need to pull it out altogether. That's what I wanna talk about next one. Just resend the, the offer and just pull it out.
I don't think that's, that's a good, big thing to do. That's.
Description.
Okay. Okay, we'll talk about it next time.
It would be nice if they would come back with what they'd like from us.
Yes.
But we dropped it in the last.
I don't, I don't know why we'd wanna discuss something that, we don't know what they wanna do. We talked to them and.
Okay. When's, when does school board be bringing?
Blood, sweat and tears, we definitely have more blood, sweat and tears involved.
I need to call Marty and let him know. What we gotta do. They, they can come to us with a proposal.
Or accept the one that's on the table.
Or accept it, correct. Okay. Go ahead, Nick.
I have one, I guess.
Nick got some information that he found out today.
Well, just one quick question. I mean, it's, it's already going around kinda a little bit in the upper Midwest with potential for the, well, with what's going on down south of us and the power issue down there and there's potential for the upper Midwest. I saw, I think so far, Alliant has said that we're probably in the clear, I think, in this area, but there is a potential chance they're at high-level limit right now, potential rolling blackouts for upper Midwest because of the situation down south. So I just wanted to bring it up and make sure, obviously, we have city services we have to supply, which is kind of a question. I don't really need an answer, but I'm sure we have backup systems if we were to lose power for two hours. How do we get water in the water tower? How do we, et cetera? It's just a good exercise to check and make sure that if that would come to fruition, that we have a plan to either respond or adapt.
Matt, how long can we go without power? Matt Goodill?
Um, we have about two days worth of water in our towers. So about that long, but if we were to be without power, we would get hooked up with generators probably within the first day.
So it would have to be a day or two that we knew we were out without power before we called for a generator.
Yeah, I mean, if we thought it was gonna be anything more than a day, we would definitely be getting hooked up to a generator.
If they were shutting the power off at, at this time for us for a day, there'd be dead people that wouldn't be, that wouldn't need water.
When they do rolling blackouts, it's a couple of hours at a time.
That's what's happening in Texas. They're dying.
All the furs been really good to the city and the fans.
I just figured, bring it up because the situation is, is around and it's, there's discussions.
Oasis.
Where would we be getting the generator?
Yeah, Altorfer, Oasis. I also happen to know that we could borrow one from another community if we needed to, so.
But they'd probably be in the same situation we'd be in, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a different situation over there, though. It's something that they could do without and just be hooked up to for a little while and then do without again, so. It's something that's doable if it was our last option.
Yeah, and I'm assuming, I mean, it only should be video rolling. They do initiate them, it's a couple hours at a time, so I'm assuming our pumps and stuff probably kick back on or, I'm sure you probably get an annoying email or phone call or something that says, hey.
Our pump station has a generator, doesn't it?
Yes.
I thought I remembered that. Fire station has one.
I just figured I'd ask just because it's about as real as I can get right now.
And I think we probably should look at our emergency management plan.
Well.
One of the things that, uh, we learned during the ratio is that we have citizens that have breathing treatments and things of that nature that are electrically based. And so we probably should maybe make some assessments on making sure those, those residents know that this is coming, especially with the schedule thing.
If they do it, Alliant will reach out.
Well, you know, they were.
You would hope.
When that happened, they were kinda asking us for our databases on citizens that were out of power and stuff, so. If communications go, a lot of times people do cell phones, send landlines, all those things. We weren't really thinking about at that time. It's probably worth it if people will thaw all power down and maybe send us public information. Get out to the COVID office or something, so people know where to go to get updates.
That would be bad. That would be bad idea to set up a plan. We have an EMA plan for, it's gonna be a long-range plan to get another generator, a permanent generator. And I'm not sure where we're at on that. Now, one time we were in line for a grant, but I haven't heard anything for months.
For some people.
So where would our, where would our emergency shelter be?
Churches, obvious churches or a couple churches. For he.
That's what they're doing in Texas right now. They're filling up gymnasiums. Generator is full of people.
The Lutheran and Methodist church are real good with, uh, stepping up.
I don't think they're predicting we're gonna get to that level here, but.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Colton and Nick, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.